And then six will be closer. My name is Bongani Bongo. I'm a member of parliament. I'm a chairperson of a portfolio of on home affairs. I'm going to allow all the members to introduce themselves. The committee that is here today is an ad hoc committee of parliament that has been set from members of other committees to look into the amendment of section twenty-five of the Constitution of the Republic of South Africa. We'll expand more when we get to the purpose. For now, I can take introduction of members of the committee and other members of parliament who are with us today. We'll start from this side.
I am Shalim Okotu. I'm the member of parliament. I serve in the portfolio committee of human settlement, water and sanitation. Thank you.
Abshen, li na lame ke Dr. Mimi Gonwe, ke le lokola committee A, eweke na le lokola Joint Standing Committee on Intelligence, le Constitutional Review Committee, na kens.
Tumela mbahayi. Li na lakai ke tibulela mahlazi, ke le lokola committee agriculture, land reform, rural development, ebele ke le lokola committee A ya section twenty-five, ya ho amend the constitution, kiaho li kala boch.
Abshen, Molweni, ndingunolitan do Bongwana, ushla lo we committee public works and infrastructure. Apinde abelilungu la le committee yenzi wayo ukulungi sa o section twenty-five, womkalko siseko alapa eh, South Africa, tia bulela kaku.
Abshen, vito emina kensan wa kabilankulu, ne membara ya parliamente ya inaya Africa zonga, ne mutamo wash duwa multi-party women caucus, ni tlela ne remembara ya social development portfolio committee, na kens.
Abshen, vito ni Brenda Akebul, ne membara ya parliamente, ni tera kaindu le shubitanabu i national council of provinces.
Abshen, Shakaravini. Menjani, me na emina Siliesta Motsepe, ne oma parliamente me tera a public service and administration, na kens.
Abshen, me na ni John Bilankulu, ni sukhaa parliamente, ni seva akakomedia mineral resources and energy ngayamko di noschelo namafora, ni tlela ni seva akatransport, ni tlela niwa akakonsest office ya kuala Kiana, inkom.
Me na ni Siliven Walese, the district speaker of Mupani.
Abshen, me na ni Matama Sangani, chief whip ya Mupani district. Na kuala menka konalele Mupani.
Thank you. We'll go to the next item. The next item deals with the ground rules. I think one, what we'd like to request is that I know all of us have the cellular phones. They sometimes distract if we can put them on silence so that we can do this work without disturbance. The second ground rule is about the face masks. Wearing off the face mask to cover the nose and the mouth for the duration of the meeting is compulsory. Avoid touching the mask unnecessarily after putting it on. We're expected to do physical distancing, at least one point five meters. But I see almost everyone here has properly social distance. We're not expected to sing because of the lockdown regulations. Handshaking is not allowed. Do not hug or any form of physical contact as you all heard the president saying hugging is the issue of the past. Ensure that your hands are regularly sanitized. There are sanitizers around and/or washed. I'm advised that the toilets in the building are not working. Therefore, we are requested to use the mobile toilet that are being outside. Cough or sneeze into your elbow or a tissue and then put the tissue in a bin and sanitize or wash your hands immediately. Do not touch your face with unwashed, unsanitized hands. Do not touch the microphone while speaking or after speaking. The last one, I'm not sure whether is correct. It says there's no signal inside the wall. I doubt whether it is correct. But if you don't see any signal, you must know that it has been part of the rules that were provided by the parliament. This wall and the precinct has been declared the Parliament of the Republic of South Africa for the duration of this meeting. We are here, requested by parliament, as an ad hoc committee. This ad hoc committee is a multi-party ad hoc committee. All the parties that are represented in parliament sit in this ad hoc committee. That is due ensure and to satisfy what is in the Constitution of the Republic, that we are a multi-party democracy. And anyone who has a view in parliament, however small that party is, that view will be listened to appropriately and accordingly. We are here in Limpopo after visited six provinces before coronavirus. We crisscrossed the country in two forms or in two groups. The first group is led by Dr. Matole Motseka, who is a chairperson of this ad hoc committee. Today, they are busy with the same work in the Nautran Cape. And then the second group is led by myself. We're here in Limpopo. We started in November yesterday. Today, we're in Kiana. Tomorrow, we'll go to Sikukune. And then on Sunday, we'll go to Capricorn. We're here to hear the views of members of the public around the amendment of section twenty-five of the Constitution of the Republic. It is also a requirement by the constitution that when you temper with any law that is in the constitution or any national legislation, you need to do as a compulsory measure, public participation so that the public can know and participate in legislative drafting in the country. That is why we're here. All the members that are here are members of parliament. They are not going to be asking questions or responding to questions. They are going to be listening to you and your views. The members that are here will have ample time and chance when we go back to parliament to debate and add their views around this amendment of section twenty-five of the constitution. So the bill was published. And as you know, other than listening to the members of societies, we expect what we call written correspondence or written submissions from the public. That process has been finished and it was closed on the 29th of February 2020. So the reason why we're here and why there is a necessity to change section twenty-five of the constitution. It is said that we must make explicit what is implicit in the constitution to ensure that we take back the land without compensation, which means in legal terms, they say expropriation of land without compensation. So why in this process? This process started long time ago. In 2018, an ad hoc committee was set up. But because we had to go for elections, its term was terminated. In 2019, when the sixth parliament started, the ad hoc committee has been set up again to look into the expropriation of land without compensation. The process that we're in now is a process of the drafting of section twenty-five in the May. We're consulting on the drafting. When we're here in 2018, we're consulting on the desirability or otherwise of amending section twenty-five of the constitution. So now we're here, we're in a process of drafting and changing section twenty-five of the constitution. Our expectation is that we need to make our submissions in a more dignified and orderly way, respect one another and one another's views, however small that view is. It must count, it must be considered. But at the end, the views of the majority will then prevail. In parliament, when you amend section twenty-five, which is contained in the Bill of Rights, the constitution requires that you must have two-thirds majority of the members of parliament. As we speak, there is no party that has two-thirds majority. What will mean? Parties that are represented in parliament, those who see things the same way around expropriation of land without compensation, will have to join hands in ensuring that they vote for this expropriation of land without compensation to be an act of parliament. So it's an act and a process that need cooperation from parties that are represented in parliament. No single party can stand up and want to push this one because it needs a two-thirds majority. So we're requesting that you cooperate with the process and respect one another and one another's views so that whoever is watching the video and everything, whether he's watching it from America, he must see that people in South Africa are very serious about the expropriation of land without compensation. We have brought in with us as a committee, they are sitting all around us. Some are land expropriation without compensation practitioners. What are you doing, Chief? Some of them are legal experts in drafting legislation. Some are practitioners on the issues of land expropriation without compensation. So they are all around with us. And they are here to assist us. We have all the cameras here. The main reason of the camera is not that we must appear on TV only, but the camera is also here to take a record, to take a record of what you are saying so that it can be recorded in parliament. Next time there's a dispute around the process, then we play the record. So that is why it is important. Yesterday, somebody was speaking and he saw me conversing with a colleague. He said, "I must listen." It's not necessarily me who must listen. These machines, they do that work because this work is going to be a record, an important record that will play in parliament before we finalize this legislation. So we're going to be taking hands. If they want to have their views recorded, they will be properly organized. They will come in, speak to the mic and go back so that we are able to get as much and many views as possible with this process. I am going to be taking hands that now wants to speak on the matter. But before I take hands, can we... There are people who have just arrived to members of parliament. Can we give them the mic to introduce themselves? We've already introduced everyone. But maybe for the benefit of everyone, you may have to... I can give them this one, don't worry.
Abshen, vito ramen di kosi, nduakamkonto eka ya ilimpumalanga, ndi membara ya parliamente, ndileka committee ya employment and labor. Niabom.
Aye, menjani. Ee, pokile na enama. Sasake mko fuma. Vitoreme Joseph Uthani, leadera official opposition ala Limpopo, kenshi legislature. Can we take hands? Oh, 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 sorry. I did not see.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. My name is Natasha Nklaweni. I'm a whip for the EFF in the National Parliament and I reside in Cape Town. Thank you very much, Honorable Bong.
Thank you. Okay. Let's take Sam quickly. But can you start to raise hands? I'm not sure, Honorable Carter, you want to register any of your views after you have registered them yesterday? No, no, no. Okay. No, it's fine. Can I see hands before that can we introduce?
Thank you so much, Honorable Chairperson, for the opportunity to do self-introduction. Molweni, menjani, abshen. Li na lakai ke Sem Mathiasi, ke le lokola parliamente ko Cape Townu, ke namoko meeting ya agriculture, land reform and rural development. Ke moko meeting A, eklo berekanaleta wazezau federal constitution section twenty-five, ke mezi makhathwari na luhutla le lhuulu Economic Freedom Fighters on behalf of the Commander-in-Chief President Julius Malem. Realosh.
Thank you. Can I see hands? I'll start here. One, two. Is your hand up? One, two. Three, four. Five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Can you come in that order? There's a mic here and there's a mic here.
Thank you, Honorable. Thank you, Honorable Chairperson, members of the committee and the public present. I'm Deirdre Carter, representing Agri-Limpopo farmers in the Mupani district. I would like to place some record that we are not too sure how a decision was taken to have a second public hearings in Tormo, a mere eighty kilometers from the Toyando public hearings. The district is vast with areas stretching as far as Huts Plate, two hundred kilometers from here. Tormo has no land in private hands. They would also have noted that there is no agricultural activities in this area. Towns like Lexitelet, Senin, Gravalot, Huts Plate exist because of agriculture. It was a fatal flaw to exclude Waterberg district, an area covering almost half of Limpopo and forty-six percent of agricultural activities in the province. Our constitution starts with the words "we, the people." It also says that we believe that South Africa belonged to all who live in it, united in our diversity. Recommendations on behalf of farmers in the Mupani district follows. Finalize and enact the expropriation bill. We cannot continue with a 1975 bill. The willing buyer, willing seller phenomena is not in the constitution, but it is a policy. Allocate the land currently owned by local, provincial and national government. Minister Dediza announced that eight hundred and fifty-six hectares of land will be made available in the Mupani area. And I put it to you that municipalities, the province and national government in the Mupani area, in terms of evaluation roles, other municipalities own two hundred and sixty-one thousand hectares. So the next is to speed up the process to allocate the remainder two hundred and thirty thousand hectares in Mupani district, give the beneficiaries and tribal authorities title deeds in order for them to become economically viable, foster mentor agreements with neighboring farms to ensure skills transferred and economic growth. And in conclusion, Chairperson, we wish to state that we as farmers are an integral part of a South African society and wish to play our role in the socio-economic and transformative vision and challenges that we face collectively as a nation. We believe that amending the constitution to explicitly provide for EWC will be counterproductive and damaging to the realization of our national vision and the socio-economic challenges that we face. We cannot in good faith support the proposed amendment to the cornerstone of our constitution, our Bill of Rights. I thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you. Take note that we are allowed to summarize your contribution in three minutes. Honorable Carter was left with two seconds, so proceed.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, members of the committee. I'm Haemi Exal. I'm from Agri-Litoba, which is a farmers' association in the greater Litoba area stretching from Mketi to Senin.
Can you speak to the mic?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Is that better? Amendment of section twenty-five. It is no secret that the land reform in South Africa has not effectively been carried out. The fact of the matter is that the South African government has in the past focused on acquisition of land and has neglected to provide the support to those that benefited from the land reform program. Hence, in many instances where land reform projects have been carried out on land that was previously used productively, today it stands fallow and unused. Without providing both technical and financial support for production purposes, beneficiaries are usually set up for failure from the start. If expropriation is pursued, it is likely to have a knock-on effect on the agricultural sector as well as the country's economy. We agree that the economic land transformation is needed for our country, but expropriating agricultural land without compensation would seriously damage the agricultural sector's competitive edge and compromise national food security, again with a knock-on effect of unemployment and poverty. There's an impact on the food production. South Africa's population increased drastically in the last ten years. The land is a critical element of the food production sector and its ownership is critical to sustainability. Impact on investment. There are various negative implications to expropriation without compensation. It causes uncertainty in current and potential investors. Without investment, the sector will regress, productivity will be compromised and job losses will occur. There's an impact on manufacturing and agro-processing. Agriculture is one sector that is strongly linked to the rest of the economy. And then in conclusion, I just want to say that with all factors taken into consideration, Agri-Litoba is against the amendment of section twenty-five. Considering the importance of agriculture in the economy of South Africa, there is a need to speed up transformation in the sector, not through expropriation without compensation, but rather working together with farmers and organizations such as Agri-Litoba to assist in available land opportunities and looking at available but dormant state-owned land and mentorship programs. Financial assistance will be needed with a common goal to ensure food security, employment and a continued contribution to the South African economy. We want to reiterate that we agree that the economic and land transformation is needed and vital for our country, but we feel that the amendment of section twenty-five will only be for the detriment of the country. I thank you.
Abshen, chawela. Kimariya skwela. I stand... I stand to support the amendment of section twenty-five of the constitution in order to make the expropriation of land without compensation possible. One, the state, including parliament, executive and judiciary, carry an obligation to redress the imbalances of the past through enactment of law that will achieve... through enactment of law that will achieve redress and quality redistribution of resources. Property may be expropriated without compensation. Only in terms of law, of general application or public purpose or in public interest, the state should be custodians of all South Africa's natural resources, inclusive of land, mineral resources and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and contextualize state custodianship of natural resources. For the purpose of this action, the public interest include the nation's commitment of the land reform and the reform to bring about the equitable access to all South African resources. And property is not limited to land. The private property and inland ownership must stop to exist and replace with common ownership and land, off land by people as whole. I thank you.
Kialabo, amblutul, divizola kagejanes monsa. Kie, kesa pota Section Twenty-Five. Korre la kodale ngelijie, helifita palamente, lebawale lagore. Seres nyaga nren, gawore, muu uwele, mowtwanajingone. Then the rest will follow. I thank you.
Njani. Eh, mena emala ni rashile maluleke, ni meleksa pota Section Twenty-Five. Eh, odetse avayrezini maranta ybeka ishtonga. Eh, na elakulu konfika kwalen, kwalen sambatafle mkuu. Eh, kwalen mataba mkuulu. Ni ybekeleliyo eh, misawa aytililikavinyi vayone, nkum.
Tawela. Karatodumisa vato kamoka. Yoa imimo kimmatuano apaswana. Na kiemela vato baba su, biyaleka vorena, barlen rajelo naha, isi kama ike misechu. Kerenaha yavorena, ayuwe, ibuya orena, ibuya orena, biyaleka vato, ayee, ibusu ekimusho. Bato baba su, kamogarinyaga owinadeleni. Nahahay kontrola ekimuso, mula uwo au fetu kialabo.
Thanks very much, Chairperson.
My name is Si. I'm from Tsanini, ward twenty-eight, Parare Village. I stand here to support the amendment of Section Twenty-Five in order to make the land, eh, to, in order to expropriate the land without compensation for possible redistribution. So the Constitution must be looked as follows. Number one, the state, including parliament, executive and judiciary carry an obligation to redress the imbalances of the past through enactment of laws that will achieve redress and quality redistribution of resources. Property may be expropriated without compensation. That was number two. Number eight of number two, only in terms of law of the general application. Number B, or eh, or eh, public, eh, public purpose or in public interest. Number three, the state should be custodian of all South Africa's natural resources, inclusive of land, mineral resources and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and contextualize state custodianship of natural resources. I thank you.
Naketsa Chairperson of the day, vitarame eh, ililyen managa. We are very much surprised because last year around May, the, the very same committee came around the provinces. We did give you, we did give the committee our views. We're not sure whether we were not heard. However, we are going to repeat what we have said already last year. Allow me first to thank the Economic Freedom Fighters for one of its seven non-negotiable pillars, which says, "expropriation of land without compensation for equitable redistribution". EFF, we will never forget because the land belongs to Africans, to South Africans who live in it. So we are saying to the committee, whoever came in this land, whoever came and stole the land from our forefathers, grandfathers and our parents, should give back to the land to its rightful owners. The land should be transferred to the ownership and custodianship of the state in a similar way that all minerals and petroleum resources were transferred to the ownership and custodianship of the state. In line with the Freedom Charter and the new vision of agrarian revolution, the state should also provide, implement and all related extension services to help those who work the land to use it for production. The state should, through its legislative capacity, transfer all land to the state which will administer and use the land for sustainable development purposes. This transfer should happen without compensation and should apply to all South Africans. That's my sub, that's my submission, Chair. I thank you.
Eh, du melani. Eh, divizola kage na tavan tago. Kie, kwa ki, sapregene ale tava, madimelen village. Eh, na, I stand to support the amendment of Section Twenty-Five of the Constitution in order to make the expropriation of land without compensation possible. Eh, point number one, the state, including parliament, executive and judiciary carry, carry an obligation to redress the imbalances of the past through enactment of laws that will achieve redress and quality redistribution of resources. Number two, property may be expropriated without compensation. Point number A, only in terms of law of the general application. B, or A, public purpose or in the public interest. Number three, the state should be custodian of all South Africa's natural resources, inclusive of land, mineral resources and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define. The state should be custodian of all South Africa's natural resources, inclusive of land, mineral resources and water. And relevant legislation, legislation should be passed to clearly define and contextualize state custodianship of natural resources. Eh, for the purpose of this action, the public interest include the nation's commitment to the land reform and the reform to bring about the equitable access to all South African resources. And property is not limited to land. That private property in land ownership must cease to exist and be replaced with common ownership of land by the people as a whole. I thank you.
Tawela. Kialabo. Yoa imimo bele asichava. Kie kane ro, majome raguvu. Kara Greatalitaba municipality. Keme mo biyaleka mwana wamo Afrika. Biyali, kamu South Africa. Mwana wamo Afrika ore, agito ore. Kewana wamo Afrika otsanedi avele, nguvu oloro. Okwa mowona, obawa zoliwa we, okwa moho. Kesa pota Section Twenty-Five. Ka he, batzoliwarena moloro we dila hona, awasa oteva. Ekawa droga he, ba parlamente, heba wamela morao. De karabota rena, biyaleka va dudi, biyaleka va aswa, bakaranaya Afrika boroa. Deka aravya. Ovane osinamuvu, ahu, se lo, se lo oreo, oka sejuja, oru ude. Mo Afrika ora ka, uvuna? He avyadili, ohona oja, lo ave la, vanababo, kadremo. Yelo oro reka yukuma na, erika kuma na na ya rena. Yelo ro, kia batzoliwarena, valoro varisi jona, kialabo.
Thank you very much. Eh, my name is Mark Malola from Greatalitaba. Eh, I too stand here to support the amendment of Section Twenty-Five of the Constitution in order to make the expropriation of land without compensation possible. I think, um, a black person can ha, can only have dignity when we have land. If we don't have land, we don't have any dignity. Let me, allow me to say, white people or white farmers, they can feel themselves even where they go because they have their own land, which belongs to us all as South Africans. I support this amendment of this code, of this Section Twenty-Five because we need to participate in that land. I thank you.
Thank you. Can I note more hands? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, eh, thirteen, fourteen. One more hand. Fifteen. You know, when I, when I started the meeting, my, my attention was not drawn to, to the fact that we have traditional leadership in our presence or not. I think those advising must advise me whether, because at the end I want the traditional leadership to, to express its view around the subject matter. Can we start in that order?
Thank you, Chairperson. My name is Simon Mangena from Greatalitaba municipality ward four. It is with great sadness to learn that more than seventy percent of the land in South Africa is owned by a small number of people, which is the white people. As the rest of us, the black people in South Africa, we remain landless. It is very important for us as South Africans to stick together, most especially the black people, to support the expropriation of land without compensation so that those that we did not get the land during apartheid, it is our time to get the land. Because without the land, we are nothing. Today in South Africa, we as black people, we are suffering simply because we got no land, even the place to call home. We experience a lot of evictions if we attempt to occupy the land illegally so because the government of the ANC, since nineteen ninety-four, they failed to give us the land. I therefore support the, the amendment of Section Twenty-Five of the Constitution so that the black child should have a piece of land and have a place to call home. It is today that we are gathered here. Retraya or amend or, or supporter the amendment of the Section Twenty-Five or raconovanalelafas. Kiveke kubela hu mushore, mushore tusha. All the members of parliament are appealing to you sitting there. When you go back to parliament to ensure or the amendment of Section Twenty-Five to allow the expropriation of land without compensation get passed so that the minority of white people should not continue to own the land, particularly when we check, we realize that the only more than seventy percent, which cannot be correct. I therefore support the amendment of Section Twenty-Five to allow the expropriation. I thank you.
Eh, nkum, Chairperson. Luwanga emala, emuusha vukea kashma osa, anda kian municipality. Okay, mina Chairperson, ani melangsholupa. Ni imele kusapota amendment there, Section Twenty-Five. Ay, komba lamisawa ibuyaka vanvantiima. Yuku leshunakunlekeni namfumwe na we ANC, uyi shamsela lamisawa emalu durangufu. Velegian vangapumelela na mina Chairperson. Shtandile shunakuanasheshi shaba ninety thousand. Ina umaka mndia ngwifupeka, etoroka lakian, shulaka engeshkotu umamidiya yina. Ikwa lakaku namfumwe na uta uyi shamsela shtandi ninety thousand. Imagine Chairperson isiswana, shulaka achikulela rangutresamisawale. So nkum, Chairperson.
Absheni. Minavitra mina emina violet wa karakozo, kusuka akar Greatagian municipality under ward twenty-nine. La nuu makukona, shabaaba. Nitsama axoana game reserve, lekungaparuwa iti darata nkwaku. Kuna maprasela mayavitanua kukuiyava lungu, lamama ngateka la batorva ina. Karuloba ngafika iwonava lungu. So ni imela kusapota Section Twenty-Five in lalali. Eh, famani meava dala parlamentu, kumsawa ayu ikavinyi vayone. That the state must, must take reasonable legislative and other measures within its available resources to forest conditions, which enable citizens to gain access to land of an equitable. of an equitable basis. And a person, a person community whose tenure of land is legally insured, insecure as a result of past recent racially discriminatory laws or practice is entitled, entitled to the extent provided by an act parliament either to tenure which is legally secure or to comparable redresses. Misava ner, aiwe ele kabinuva yon. I stand here to support the amendment of constitution, section twenty-five. I thank you.
Chovela, nagi Hendrik Marcelingwaana from what twenty-six. Kiemimo bali, odlo supporter, eh, section twenty-five, onele ngodlo mbanbirini, mchala lini wa matshomo, ah, ubeli lobraro. Ovane, nalinni, naki jamo, nagi niya reina, ilu ruto bali. Mwadli ngwona, ogari, ardu moru joeni, because of wabago le reina, wokunkuku reina, wa jijuna, wa jilaluma ruga ofela. Please, lela ling mobile, kilo wa li state sa reina, kobela relu wela morao. Lewa ujere, arsa kobele vitao le, mula ugo li ngwona kailurzi in school. Please make sure, lewa ujenu rubel na ya reina. Mashu biyavara nari a kobe la, beg to ask, please, aganamunzi yon maini.
Du melan, nagiji mimudi ivan, kekwa zanee, what twenty-nine. I stand to support the amendment of section twenty-five of the constitution in order to make the expropriation of land without compensation possible. The state, including parliament, executives and judiciary, carry an obligation to redress the imbalances of the past through enactment of laws that will achieve redress and quality redistribution of all resources. Property may be expropriated without compensation only in terms of law of the general application or public purpose or in public interest. The state should be custodian of all South African natural resources inclusive of land, mineral resources and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and constitutionalize state's custodianship of natural resources. For the purpose of this action, the public interest include the nation's commitment to the land reform and the reform to bring about the equitable access to all South African resources and property is not limited to land. That property, that private property in land ownership must stop to exist and be replaced with common ownership of land by the people as a whole. That the state must take responsible legislative and other measures within its available resources to set conditions which enable citizens to gain access to land and equitable basis. A person, community whose tenure of land is illegal, insecure as a result of past racial discriminatory laws or practice is entitled, entitled to extent provided by an act parliament either to tenure which is legal, secure or comparable redress. No provision of this section may impede the state from taking legislative or any measures to achieve land and water and related reform in order to redress the result of the, of past racial provision of this section is in accordance with the provisions of section thirty-six of one.
Your time is expired. Thank you.
Inkomu Chairperson. Name Masengimzaman Steven Akashma Usa, akamaspala wa gyan. Mon komisaku, as the ANC will support the expropriation of land as just a difficult process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing the land question and exappropriation of land without compensation as a part of that process. We convinced by evidence that the willing buyer, willing seller modelly did not work. I request the committee to bear this in mind. Land reform is about addressing historical injustices and dispossession of the black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth and promote socio-economic transformation. So the ANC land reform program provides a radical way to address the land question and build productive assets to our people and ensure food security. And then in conclusion, Chair, I'll say, we submit that on section twenty-five clauses one, four, five, six and nine should remain as they are. Thanks a lot Chair. I stand to support the amendment of section twenty-five of the constitution in order to make the expropriation of land without compensation possible. The state, including parliament, executive and judiciary carry an obligation to redress the imbalance of the past through enforcement of law that will achieve redress and quality red distraction of all resources. Property may be expropriated without compensation only in terms of law of the general application or a public purpose or in the public interest. The state should be custodian of all South African's natural resource inclusive of land, mineral resources and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clear, define and constitutionalize state custodianship of natural resources. For the purpose of action, the public interest include the national commitment to the land reform and the reform to bring about the equitable access to all South African resources and property is not limited to the land. That private property in land ownership must stop to exist and be replaced with common ownership of the, of land by the people as a whole. That state might, that state must take responsibility, responsibility, reasonable legislative and other measures within its available, available resource to forest condition which enables citizens to gain access to land of any equitable basis, na kens.
Okay, randakushela Chairperson, nawat berukulonje vye. Lo anga imala, lo anga imala ekalti amorupani, nsuka apalavura, what fifteen, matigoshkaya. Please, ana komba la kango yevarangilva ina. Mea ma ekomba lam savai viyanzaku kaino. Because le ina yu makoh, ba isha vse la standi, ama ruvinava kokwana, anga namasirava kokwana, ngatle faka namarit. Ba viya peg ba isha vse la standi, yama thirty-five thousand. Please, a ina yonat thirty-five thousand, ekomba la ma ya fighta, mta kamsavalia miwi sela nza kuka ina, itaya atsamu, knamasirava kokwana. Ekomba la, mea mea fixa, da idha inkle parliament, inkomu.
Chovela, you are mi mo bila parliament, you are a South African, you still feel a mona klegu waari. From what two one, Greta's municipality. Eh, realevo, balamenta reishu, izamele kipchone ya wya rabe, kamo nu zanee. Eh, kiemimo, ekotaos supporter, section twenty-five. Ibeale, rro kobe la goru, ibale kaga ibra baduli, guduba zanee ni. Ro kobe la ro banu, na ra yaya ro na, ya watzolibare ro na, e wya ra yin. Ya galu le ya na, balagoya lo pasa, mo rukto anoro, na kagalu le ma vuru awi. Azale ju mabitabare na, galilek tukifense. Eh, ibale, rro kobe la goru, balamenta reishu nasi, ere fedrola. Ibeale kaga dile gualini, ya re dor fedrola, le na soa esere fedrola. Eh, re, egar du melo goru, ma vuru barifena gavuna, lo toma lo bulake na, rakono tijale kavishi. Le mi ma unguavura na lakona goru, ya acha uwa balamenti. Go lazo, le ya warina kagua tavi. Ibeale, re le situ kana ma vuru arifana blasi ya reina, lo ja yini, go lazo li sebile zanee. Re alo kobe ba twamdu mu, refini blasi doba na bulake na te. Thank you.
Chovela, scharbasamu dimu kamo e, arya ole, aneribe gara yona. Eh, nagili du melisa, kama gana bolena, genape, du dele dispo guane, kaboru loke guane, gambe, what twenty-two. Nagi emede, osa pota ba tuwaba reva lao, kama uavore na, lena, giema le buwona. Gerera ube, la bolena wa edra bele ba bore na, le bolena kama atole arrela zubona. Ena le bolena uwele, le arrela la, mara, kelo kabo lena, akusu bonchisi. Karu lu duji aboze, vida le re aboze, ena na, re la obuda bolena, kare asogola. Arere se lo, rijiado ma uavore na, arere kalema, rebula wa gedala. Wa ana va de se lo, basali arere de se lo, arana le bolani, re alo be la te ba shuwa mu limu. Ahwa, rutusa ni kama uavore na, le buru na re tabolo we. Otsana le buwaba leva rijiado ma uavama wamela ma uni abuwona. Lenarasa le le ma uavore na, re asogola rebula wa gedala, gedwe manama, genape di pugane, ana gambe.
Eh, minani surprise recordo, kusuka awa thiti, section F, giani. Eh, I stand here in order to support the amendment of section twenty-five. And taibla bla ishtonge ku, eh, kuteli ba kokwana, na ba papa, la ba kulu kumba. Eh, minanta ku, ne savaya ba pokonwa ina, aiwe linda ku. Efumala shotaala, alupheka, makaya ma ina, logo kurukofana nilika ina, etami, ilha ina, amunduhu, ah, okutina ku. Ku matikamarato rengana ela, eku, na xpeiska raha ba. Se antaku aba ewi sela imisava ku, eku taku ku matinza utu, eku taku tshamaka tona, nava nava ina eku. Se efumba na tikamarinti ngwenava na, ilha ina, naba budwa ina. Mkuma ku, kilo kanga tshona new amundin mara, ekari etama amunduhu. Sa ekomba lam savai bielan zaku kabinuva yon, na kens.
Eh, du melan, kamuka kamo olon. Du melan, kamuka kamo olon. Yo abule la umu, kese trola malemela, ochoa Greta Lethaba, aso hobo, what nine. So ki, itlo supporter, amendment here, section twenty-five. Ore, mu, owele, obe ni babasu, obatu babasu. Ma vuru, abatale naaka, kamo Afrika boroa. Ngase sepele boka ya ko Holland, ka kaba chela na kabo bona. Yale, kiwe kere, lo hotale lebe ni gumo, la ku parliamente. Wele la ngabe, lele ba bucho ore, batu babasu, basala kana kaya buwona. Re yu kobe la, ana yale, form kala. Kuwa didu la ngona, kuwa aso hobo, ausala wa du lun. Duru oja reina, ausala modufula loona. Zeta suuri chiechi, hedu homu cha atse na kaplasinga kake, war, war diswar. Sorry, resandere di chieka chalete. So, ndwe woncha uka buzu buzu ore, ma vuru ba. Batle, hurichela sesengwe, sesengwe, yale kaga e lo, ba chiechi, brahulu baranachale, ba ba chela du homu, kaspili. So reina ele re na baswa, ritlole la ba na ba kavore na, la ba tolo ba kavore na, essa IFF, kiya leboka.
Eh, inkomu varanger, vitewa imina bon ami Lorenz ngobeni. Nitsama iti ku inrapko sidza o simsengi, eka wadiya sungula, ya maspala wadiyan. Ni emailo kseketela le shaku, xiengesha bu, ma kumembre, ntkano shabu mbewa zha Africa Dzonga. Ashi nchi chiwa na kuunzuluxiwa le shaku, shikumela lana, na kutlrisiwa, kamsava, ndlekanzriso. Niri, eka ngwinava chapsiki, xana eku kwa la oka yini, mitlan kisan kariwa ina. Eh, akatiko va Africa Dzonga ekuva, eh, yini ya, ya vula vula, imakale eksekela, elembera twenty-eighteen, elinyenyenya. Na namtla nashu ma ajika, kana tikunku, inkwaru, mila va, tntlamsele, eka yina le shaku, ishla vakuin, kame, shifixine tinle vinta ngwe. Se na shatsan zakuva, mifikelela shko, sha inava akatiko, antakalu ku, islamserini shislava eka ngwin. Eh, te kamera nashu iki, la mkuva asurkona, ku ne ta, ku tlenkeletavumboni. Le shaku, inava kanti meni, iri, chichani na kuunzuluxa mbewa zha tiku, reru le shaku, misavalii. Inka ava, inka tekioa, eva lampa, nasho na inimpi, tlela eka ina, vinnyi va, vinnyi ni va xizi, eta ave la na yon. Eku ringana, ekuva lava, inka imavo kuini yavona, va ala na yon. Fumo Africa Dzonga, akuve wona, lo, zaraku, ulauri, zamsava, ya Africa Dzonga, inkwao. Palamende, kasimiva chava yin, niwalungu. Ambi, mitatlela, mi buyarini, ni chava valungu, inkovu. Palamende, kasimi vachava yini valungu, ambii, mitatlela, mi vuyarin, nichava valungu, inkou.
Na kens ah, Chepessen, mina mina setrek mthombeni, from what twenty-four, Greater Giyane municipality, Makewa Village. Ni imali nukuta sapota the amendment of sixteen twenty-five, eli aklerisum savai eka vinyvayona, kurava njeriso. Se ne reforma meyva jala palamende nukure, black people analoga cry, they are tired. They need their land, give them their land back, inkou.
Namsheweta inkweni, vitramina imina tsakani material record. Ni imala niri wasato am Afrika, ngerne shibilelo. Ni imala niro wasato am, am Afrika, ngerne shibilelo eti magdam sav. I stand to support the amendment of section twenty-five of the constitution in order to make the exploitation of land without compensation possible. That the state must take reasonable legislative and other measures, measures within its available resources to forest conditions which enable citizens to gain access to, to land of an equitable basis. A person, community whose tenure of the land is legally insecure as a result of the past racially discriminatory laws or practice entitled, entitled to extent provided by an act, parliament, either to tenure which is illegally secure to comparable redress. No provision is section, in, of this section may impede the state from taking legislative legislative and other measures to achieve land and water and related reform in order to add, to redress the result of past racial provision of this section. Is inaccurateable with the provisions of section thirty-six. Parliament must enact the legislation referred to in section six, thank you.
Eh, in, in shikan, eh, mina, imina kazamula ngoveni, wakusuka kawa diyiti. Balakritakiyan, etam dangaa, wakagao. Eh, aninga etinkari, yoku sotalasubula vruin. Eh, maka ikul yoku, se siasanga tarivaaka, le siasanga tarivaaka freedom charter. Shaku, the people shall govern, entiyisso ele ku fumi. Kambe, inga thikini sulusai, nasufamba ekari subona. Se, ni kensaloko mtilaku, itaya takotaku, me yituata niyeva akuku, e vula vula entiyisso yoku. Eh, eka constitution yaya yena, lava leswa ku, kunchi chiwa section twenty-five. Lakakonstitution, yar Republic of South Africa. Ngofungo, kashi yengele xi, shifane xi chichiwa shivuruaku. Misava, na nundule inga kayona, ayitekiwi, a, ndlekanzriso. Sosolaso stopfuna leswa ku, ikota ku anya, ikota ku kula, ikota ku fumati kuleri inga vula ku. Tani ANC, yoku, the people shall govern, less the people govern. Mwena telane mtelapa palamende, me ngafikileme amban eku yaiti party. Mwena wanso ngaya kantimeni, ayeni, ayimasi ngwe, endele shaku. Iwana majority, yaku kota ku chichanao. Yoku lo mo inda fukamuku no, inawa ANC, yu ngueme mitshika kuwanla. Chichana mbiru nguwe, ay, enticheni, yunkweni, fika ituana na yu vula shushi ngwe yoku. Tikule, mtaule, msavali, ayiteka, ndlekanzriso. Sosolaso, sosanga ta ekufuna, ani melakseketela leswa ku, kabula, section twenty-five of the constitution of the Republic of South Africa. I amendiwi, leswa ku, yu vula seshwa ku no. Ayiteki ni, misava, without compensation, inkou.
Lina laka, kilna mahlo, Steve, kijwa kilikuwa Marule Municipality, onamo Mupani District. Lenna kitile mababili tava yona yeyaa, wuchiana, kantele compensation. Yewe ilongore palamende, yere relikayo na. I vile, yavaya, laka, chisinu, yaku chincha malao gor, idumelleta va yaku chia, eh, naga kantele compensation. Ki, ki kuwa yileta va yewe ilongore, itlo re thusarle ma Afrika vura. Gor na kaya re na, lerena reku ele yare, naga goruwa na, viale, reyatsava gor, iripan chichogadi, ripana, ripana. Chewe ilongore, karine kavelo, yu khulumo godimugayo na. Vialerere, lena, lele ma palamende, le kawetapi li, viamacha African National Congress. Chelampi, letive gor, reli di chava, tava yere ayteka, gor, lerena during our lifetime. Retelibone, renale naga, renale kavelo, renale bukhona. Gor, rekata ra, rabali, libukhoni. Yaku shumisha ma vua, renaka tuhanedokavu, loona viala ma vua re na. Ashumisha ke re na, reforma ke wa yu ilongore, baraya mogilina gaya re na. Viale, re, libukhoni rena, yu kabakalagore, diskilsyo na ke xaleba di transfer, namogodimugavatu barina. E ukiyavaga tele loa, kabakalagore, barina gakiya bo. Mo la ilogu mo shumumugulu, odirua ke re na, ma Afrika. Vialerere, chelampi, lele limusho, rekama ragoga lena, reale teka lele limusho. Gor, tava yeye yagora naga yu vuele, ku vinwabo na, ay direge during our lifetime. Reskeratila re postpone na, re postpone na, eh, iyakuapi, mo ilongore. Mahfelilo ngregaskera tuwa riboni. Rasa nale menoa koloma, rasa, ngakata koloma ma fumo, ana gaye ele yare na. Isive ku chewo re nguwa telo ago, ke wa varichiechi, gunaga, komewa, bai bai pocha gor, naga kaya bo na. I vile, baviyale meluani, yoro, yu vitsiji. Yavaya ilogu obile malato, nage nyeyi ilogo, yaga ago, rele ma Afrika vura. Ke re, pehile katava yaku chiana gawa without compensation pehile, gyalabo.
Okay, no, thanks very much and greetings to, to all who are here. Eh, also observing protocol. On behalf of the community which is led by the ANC, we are supporting the move to amend eh, the constitution as long as it will quickly fast track eh, land reform. You might have observed that we are over twenty years in democrats. And we have been using some instruments eh, which have not benefited us. The willing seller, willing buyer, the market, this market driven reform system have failed us a lot. So we are saying it is time for, for government to intervene. Eh, it is time for the ANC to use its majority together with eh, other organizations that are understanding the dynamics of dispositions of, of, of land. So we are, we are here on behalf of our people. We are saying for, for years eh, to be without land. Eh, it means you don't have food, you don't have job, you don't have livelihoods, even the spiritual. Land is also a spiritual matter. So poverty is because we don't, we don't have this land. So we are saying it is time for government to amend section twenty-five and make sure that we, we also support the, those who already have the little land that we have, we have received. We have, through the other forms of eh, the restitution, redistribution programs. We, we, we only have achieved less than fifteen percent. So we are at a speed which cannot even be compared with a tortoise. So we are saying government must act, must direct more funds to address where possible. If, but we are saying, let's scrap, let's scrap eh, the land markets where people are not willing at all to cooperate with government, to cooperate with society. So we are, we are supporting the move, it is about dignity here. If people continue to play political gymnastics, eh, obviously, we will be caught off guard. Because people will end up doing what we don't expect. What we will also not be forgiven by the next generation. Because at the end, ignorance may result in unrest and wars. So on behalf of our people as lead, eh, myself, Mr. Tomben. I'm saying, let's quickly do it, thanks.
Thank you, Chepessen. I, Sohavala Ignisius, from the ANC, stand here to support the exploitation of land without compensation as a process of dignifying the African masses. We believe this process is a process which must be just and is a process which must be equitable in that all represent, all representation, representative groups in the republic shall have to find space in terms of ownership of land, but its custodianship should be in, with the state. We want to also admit that the section twenty-five clause, clauses one, four, five, six and nine should remain as they are, but we're saying on clause two, we make the following amendments. We add a new subclause two C, which must read as follows. Subject to without compensation and nil compensation under conditions laid out in law, in, laid out in a law of general application. On clause three, which speaks about property, we make the following amendment to the first line of the clause, everything after it should just remain as is. We say the amendment should read thus, where compensation is payable, the amount that is to be paid should be just and equitable. We further say, on clause seven, we make the following submission. That for the purpose of these hearings only, the text remains as is. On clause eight, we make the following amendment in the first line of the clause as follows. And that when we also call for the sustenance of the remaining clauses, that no provision of this section, including the payment of compensation, may, may impede the state. In conclusion, we're saying land exploitation should be, is a just and equitable, and equitable process which shall indeed restore human dignity. We call on the state to make sure that the custodianship of the land insofar as the administration of section twenty-five be with the executive authority in this regard. The minister responsible for land affairs. In the absence of that, we say cabinet or the cabinet shall be responsible for the implementation of, or shall be responsible for the implementation and administration of section twenty-five, thanks.
Namsheweta inkweni muna mgala. Minna, imina Afrika Mangani, Afrika Mangani, wale kamsava beli. La awa ni yitu, maka yaku, kunna maka yaku. Egfane kere, ilanga msava, kumbekulanga mali. Se, ina, leche ilava kushori, ilava mali, a ilava msava ni. Msava ewenayo, nankarolea, malembi otala, a, a, kotu kentanchumu msava. Lavakota kutira msava, eva lungu, lavakota ukurva, egelama tamatiiswa. Mara aka inavan van tima, engelskoti seso, ilava mali ineene, vaynika mali.
Ki melanga muka, nagena freedom amudiba from kapani. Ke re, travaya kamuka, ewe rupela orlerena rebelliona, morizbork le filola re na. Ifyava le filona, le filole, izbetsava refechalete, gyalabo. Chobeela, naki dorawara malove. Kido rawara malove la, kapani. Ki venchopela re, jega magarala ogajona, dipetan, gak, ke kalerela. Gyalabo.
Inkou mu, mina ni matibla nosa, finians. Eh, akatiku akala katomo, akamopana, skamasparawa giyane. Vula seso, yoku ra yee, niku ra yee. Ina, eka bumbi wa lezi tenganthama, tikari tiendliwa ekomiiti, tikari ti kombi insali sakuri. Yoku yaa, inau longa endliwa washia, ngasha twenty-five. Eh, msava yona, yingakota kuva, yitekiwa, kambe, logu ikari yitekiwa. Eh, yita, loe, angatakuwa ilava msava, angaiteka mara kuria vandriso. Se ekokwala okaseso, nibona shifane rini, yu kulanda nau lu, lesakuri. Eh, entiyisso, lokombi savaha, eh, yit, yitlelela, eka vinyvayona. Wakari, vatande kaku itiriso, singa a, ansa, yingatheli, logu yikela, subula vandriso. Avanga ukumi, yita thama yiri avandriso, inkou.
Chobeela, yebi mu okifilipai, nwa kampakwanu, kijwa kasa hobo. Naridlemor lolakadi loloka, kere sabire, kirurumuswar narulukisete, meshumaru, shumelar narutsonela, watshabawa ngwe. Akandadipulele jedi nchiki gyalabo.
Thank you very much, um, Mr. Ben William. I want to greet everybody in this house and to remind everyone that land belongs to everyone who live in it.
Can you get closer to the mic?
Yes, I was saying, the land that we are living, it belongs to everyone who live in it. So my submission here is that the section, I mean act one oh eight of nineteen ninety-six, section twenty-five clauses, my submission is that clause number two, sex, we add that section two, clause two C, subject to with compensation or nil compensation under compensation condition laid out in a law of general application. Clause number three, where compensation is payable, the amount of compensation and the time and manner of payment must be just and equitable, etcetera, etcetera.
Then the other submission is that clause number seven, that the purpose of this hearing, only the text remained as it is. Clause eight, number eight, we are saying no provision of this section, including the payment of compensation, may be impeded the state, et cetera. In conclusion, expropriation of land is just land equitable process to restore the dignity of our people. The expropriation must be done by excluding authority, the executive, and the, and where there is a dispute which cannot be resolved, can it be referred to the judiciary? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Eh, in common, eh, meina, meina anzama, Thomas Maluleke. Eh, niri insika na kaka adocomit. Eh, ni imala, ni ima hiri ANC, ita, ita seketela mfu mu, leshaku, section twenty-five. Eh, ay amendi yuwi. Yuku ya yaku chinchaka wumiwa. Eh, hiri ANC, stundakaleku, eh, the Native Land Act, year nineteen thirteen. Yifke yu ku ngamshaba amavukweni ya vinuwa yona. Se, hiri ANC, seketela kumshaba ay chelil siwi akabinyuwa yona. Handikaku buyeri yuwa, kubala wa awa yiku melnavona, awa yu yivula. Itala, eh, shalala, eh, ki, ilangu de msaba le yinazpimsumbiri. Gunamshaba le yingakati ebon areas, le yuwa niya yo yingati economicapa. Hiri ANC, hiri shiavi shabano, ay, ashi ni ku msaba liyaku langduwe ekonomi leshaku. Ekonomi yingavoya mila kalo liria, yingavoya mila karona. Yu kuataku buya, eh, bana shavi, eh, taney banti ma, ku bana shavi, sharufu, ra leshu ngakona, aga economicapa. Yuma kaya hiri ANC, hiri, ilsho shotela sunene kumshaba ay chelil agabi nyuwa yona, handika ndiriso. Compensation ay, ay support hiri ANC, msaba ay chelil agabi nyuwa yona. In common.
In common, eh, vitoni thaini, lama lanu wakan gobeni, nshama kuala giyani, mele evan darah ANC. Eh, ritani, shosungu na lakutakensa lukupalamenti ikoti lukutana kungana vanu. Le shi infuma ANC unguvulasionakupalamenti taavanui. Eh, trai ikensa ikuti le namuntla evanu ni kuataku vulavula. Eh, ima ritani, nirinipara van darah ANC. Ni ima ndakusseketela kuchinchua kabumbiwa ra section twenty-five. Re amendi yuwa. Ku evanu, la bangye abaru kusuphekeni. Ban, la bangye vatranaleka kushoshishka ngonami, na ngunamangatshama kualanu. Dignity shaya inay buya. Eh, ikora inaribu ya, msaba ya inay buya, etako ta ku, eh, ku yiterisa. Vaka eh, evan, banti ma, eh, tijile kusuphekeni sunene. Ay, nanchuma ekonomiya tikwa ay komangi, eh, msaba le yenge kungamshaba ya inay ay komangi. Etimai, letingakona tona. Tiko na kuva tifambi sa timali, ti akalaba, ingibanga itekela tikuma sikuala, ma yanga hinta, eti nipiteta tilkoo. Vaka eh, hisseketela, eh, kutani, hiri ANC, hiri, ay, seketela, eh, kuchinchaka, eh, wumiwa, ku, eh, msaba ya vanu, ay, evanuini. Ingaka unga ntekeli indjuya mina namuntla. Loku, nuku na yila ba, yu ku ni falelili shaba. Akunale shisha buako, akunale shuchinchu wako, nla ku gunaku, kuchinchanu eka kuchinchanu wile karuo olowo, ba ineka shiboni, ba ineka rasipereta, ba teka msaba ya inana tomu. Shesu hiri, hiri evan darah ANC, eh, wumiwa arichinchi urukota ku isapota, hiri banti ma, eh, shinjuti shaya ina, shita kota ku buya. In common.
Neki na, vamishaba karao. I stand to support the, I mean, amunition of se- section twenty-five of the constitution in order to make the exploitation of land without compensation possible. Thank you.
Okay. In common, bitaramena, emena soza, Kenneth Masuruke, am gangen wakan gori. Ne taney mele vanda, lerufuma kara ANC. Ne ngakuri, mo ya basanda, yuku ri, akunene, lukvaru vanu, bata ima vafuma. Ni vula leshu kukwala okakuwa, mwena miri palamenti, mwena engamisahuwa, mi titsu netili alin kaya. Eh, re, msaba ay tekiwe, yu yu yela ikava. Lava ay riaboona. Kambe ke, taney evan darah ANC. Eh, re kunasunawana wan kufana na clause two, le yin ngafane la ku yichincha, clause two hiri. Loko msaba, ite kiwa kuri kukunamo ako lansi kayo. Kufane loku akiru ami ako, lo va kuruko na kungar msaba. Eh, na hiri evan darah ANC, hiri. Msaba ay tekiwe, kambe loko kuru nasu wa leshu ngavakusuriko, akua akiru so na kungar msaba. Vanu, va hinashikanwi na, ena hiri vanu na vamshaba le. It is a virtual answer. In common, sunene.
Good afternoon, everyone. I greet the committee, the leadership which is here. Uh, my name is Szeke George M. Tombeni, I'm from Greater Giani Municipality. I'm here to represent, uh, the African National Congress. Uh, our position is very clear and simple. Uh, our position is that land should be expropriated without compensation. As those people who are owning the land right now, they did not pay this land. So you cannot understand if a person is saying you must pay any charges or charges, you, any amount is willing from that land which he got it or she got it freely. Eh, I so say. Thank you very much.
Nera anza kukensa, para ngiruwa ina kuva mi kute kutamta ifikelela, amathweni kaya ina. Na kutika rataka mwena. Ni ime la, nere me visemkharewa kuuma alulekaani, matuko shkaya. I support the amended amendment of section twenty-five. La ebulabula ku etima gata leshu shunga shaya ina. Ngamshaba ya bakokwanuwa ina. La yingakulelako, lavakokwa ina bangae telako. Lavachorba ina namuntla bengelo kurilei. Yuku ba ekari shabserua, leshu shunga shaya ina. Le shi yingakulelakashona. Se antaku, para ngiruwa ina, yu kutitonga hatu. Loku ma ataba mi itinelerini, me la bakutashuru lo shaya ina. Ah, yu kongbe la ku, no loku ma atavuya, eh, kaya ina. Yu kongbe la mi yu yela, nama ritia ku anta. Kukumbisaku, makari ma yingisela leshu batchorba ina bengelo kurileni shoo. Vaka revamshamshela, vamiruma, ku mia amathweni. Ku yameya yu kongbelela, leshu irila ku yusho. Kuviya ka mwé, yu kongbe la mi yu yela nama ritela manene, ya kutamta indjela. Leshaku shilo, leshu shunga shaya ina, va yu yisela rin. Kunai, nae, etako ta kutaka. In common.
Thank you. Can I take further hands? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. In that order. You can come closer in that order.
In common, langa imalan, ya ni kimkhare. Amsengi, kamseña kuringanana, neri wadiwani. Na kusseketela, kurimisaba ay chelile kabi nyuwa yona. Loku, nana kutisa leshu yingakurisaso na, yu kule kuva va ekari shupeka. Bakoko wa ina, lavaba ina. Vanu wa na, abati vinamasira, abati ratipurasin, kuwa na bakue leka shukani. Loku, baba landa baba, baba ku, ma kuenua we na, yu lo vinima rasira yingaribuni. Akansongeleloto kale shansa kuva nu banti ma. La yingakula yingarana chumu na batchorba ina, bangayese la ngichumu. Ne yingamshaba ay chelile kaya kaya yona. Loku, nina kutisa la va bangatshama la, anto wa na, wa na kupalamenti palamenti. Ah, yu kongbe la ku, fange na tibuku na tibensel. Ra thama vaka rubana kutisa kesile ya mashwi. In common.
Tawela. Tawela. Ya wulela nmu kimaitiwashala, kijwa kila khabani, ki membara wa EFF. Naki do wilela because of land. Na yu kubala rumabua yele vinuwa yona, because ratupaya. Kamisunudogira retadani rilitene. Riro balaga usierisana, marabaga refa play, gera jonobana rumuvalu playka umadula ngona, eh, kaba peter. Kialabo.
Tawela. Lina lakagana Sohobo, Mudiba. Eh, lena, Gameji, African National Congress. I support the amendment of section twenty-five. Eh, based on three aspects, they go to check how to level it. First aspect, relevant in the agricultural sector. Our black communities and our black farmers cannot compete with the white counterparts because of the lack of land. They are always landlocked, va dujiga mara, eh, va, eh, eresundiridiredi plusana, aru na mori kakhona, olemo, ova na ra ijiri, itwirigwa tuwa, webe lo basi program South Africa, varu, obana na re masu di varu mutu, dujibra, Britannia, va dujige Germany, na rewe giyagare. So the land must be given to the people or level na vahono odo wela, they were competitive in the, in that sector. Ya wobe diki issue to a resume. Anabya ju, ugalebelela, if you go to every village these days, you'll find lodges there. It's not like our, our black counterparts do not want to make lodges outside the villages. It's because when they go outside the villages, they do not find the land to do that thing. So the land must be given back to, 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 to the people so that va tuvarinalo va tuvarasu, va hono compete ale, the lodges jagohaus. I'm from Marulin, I see all those lodges that they are white owned. Utola mutwathuri, na re eteli, leteli, o nyaga lodge varu, zena kama garare, udira lodge gamu, u, 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 upatelemoyen. That land must go back to the people, awanamu tuatilo lena ramalufasin. The third one is the issue, eh, land in the, in the ebon areas. Our government institutions are busy renting out eh, buildings. Eh, kuali because, eh, basundiruwa eh, somewhere house le, 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 the drobo. Na re news, na omu tuvaru na re itwirigmangmang. So for the money, the money that government pays every day and every month towards those people, the landlord of the, those institutions, must now go back to be channeled into building those infrastructures for the government that are going to be permanent and rezborer na re yela. Itlo va ya ba, le vanu na varu na they are going to institution of irony. Aba ya wuyu, wa ya bailema kuwenuwa outing. Pa, 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 pata la chelitenchichi. Kuali, kuali di, 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 ga, 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 di drobo. Ova na na re yela ebeguwa isadi ruro selo. Ki oka kuwa ro de resa, di universitjara de resa. Jedi bo di universiteja, ja, 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 ja mucho. Kala bo, kiza michele naga new.
Thank you. I'm Faitan Tsakos Tawela from Greater Giani Municipality, what twelve. I stand to support the amendment of section twenty-five of the constitution in order to make the expropriation of land without compensation possible. The state, including parliament, executive and judiciary, carry an obligation to redress the imbalance of the pastoral ene, enactment of the laws that will achieve redress and quality redistribution of resources. Property may be expropriated without compensation only in terms of law of the general application or a public purpose or in the public interest. The state should be custodian of all South Africans' natural resources inclusive of land. Mineral resources and water and relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and contextualize state custodianship of the natural resources. For the purposes of this action, the public interest includes the nation's commitment to the land reform and the, the reform to bring about the equitable access to all South African resources. And property is not limited to land. The private property in land ownership must cease or stop to exist and be replaced with, with common ownership of land by the people as a whole. Thank you.
Eh. Minan ninga imala, imina Elias Novela kambato. Amanda! Nithela nitbula le so kuchirulu xamina. Hinava kambato. Hirila hemisaba yahina. Ay buyaleka hinaha anteka release. Ukulu kubenge ndesona sesokuri, va buye, ibuyala amabokuwa nahi na release la ingata amabokuwa na harima e techumu. Etazaye. Ikensa omuanyani. Hingubonaku akota ko kufuna wa kunga malima. Amanda!
Eh, nkoum. Karo ilo ninga okuma ku imali matsonnyangwena. Of course, tane, emu Africa, loyi, atike luega sayena. Eh, lava bangasubuola ba, the worst colonization is the colonization of the mind. That is the worst colonization of mankind. Eh, ni melalele, ni imana swana, ku amendiwa ka section twenty-five, desungom sabaitekiwa without compensation, but with caution. Hemisaba, efanele eti imiserele ku iteriza. Asungapuni chomo, nibana vastland, le ingatre ku chomo. Look what the pen is in bad. Namuntawa pumele ba lunga abawewe bata tekama prasiawo. This, ani wuli kuri ay tsekene imisaba yahina. Yere emabokuwa nala obas. And another caution, before COVID nineteen, akuna wadhi dunguana azibito na corruption. Zona inka ku dyayenza COVID nineteen ya hansi. Therefore, embetana ku the honorable sunguana mngatama kala matsonnyang. I'm not sure whether you are honorable. I'm not. Let me repeat. Asponi chomo, kure eti mbela, ukuru mendasana, mngaindoson. Kovaa, sinusa ena, hemisamba, we don't trust you. Especially myself, I don't trust the politician. They keep on lying on us. Every year, if somebody community hall, our money is being spent on transport, on food. Ena itagala ku free transport. No! Says one have stay ba, we are giving you a blank check. Ukumisaba le, ya ni kuwa ti chomi. Ay ingani ku si swana le sunga imala.
Thank you, your time is.
Thank you very much.
Expired, thank you. Next speaker.
Eh, Melan Kimogli Eric Mashao from Greater Etawa, what eleven. I stand here to support the amendment of section twenty-five of the constitution in order to make the expropriation of land without compensation possible. Number one, the state, including parliament, executive and judiciary carry an obligation to redress the imbalance of the past through enactment laws that will achieve redress and quality redistribution of resources. Number two, property may be expropriated without compensation. A, only in terms of law, the general application. B, or a public possible or in, in the public interest. Three, the state should be custodian of all South Africans', all South African natural resources inclusive of land, mineral resources and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clear, define and context, contextual state custodianship of natural resources. Four, for the purpose of this action, A, the public interest including, include the nation's commitment to the land reform and the reform to be, to bring about the equitable access to all South Africa resources and B, property in, in not limited to land. Five, that, that private property in land ownership must cease or stop to exist and be replaced with common ownership of land by the people as whole. I thank you.
I greet to, to the entire participant in the hall. Myself standing here. I'm Rosetta Victor from Greater Etawa Municipality, representing the ANC at the level of the region in my capacity to be in there, acting regional organizer. Our submission as the ANC, we want to submit that on section twenty-five clauses one, four, five, six, nine should remain as they are. On clause two, you make the following amendment. We add new sub, sub clause two C, which must read as follows. Subject without compensation, our nil compensation under conditions laid out in law general application. Three, which speaks about property, we make the following amendment to the first line of clause. Everything after, after that remains the same. Where compensation is payable, the amount of the compensation and the time and manner of payment must be just equitable. On clause seven, we make the following submission. That for the purposes of those hearings, only text remain as it is. On clause eight, we make the following amendment in the first line of the clause as follows and everything thereafter remains the same. No provision of this section including the payment of compensation may, may impede the state. In conclusion, we are saying expropriation of land is just an equitable process of to restore the dignity of our people. This expropriation must be done by an executing authority, the executive, and only where is, it's a dispute which cannot be resolved. It can then be referred to the judiciary. I thank you.
Eh, tla ngalima yeni itangela na mabundaraya omokala ekretakiani hansi kawa twenty-five hanska wukusaka chief sumir. Eh, ni miliku balabala eh, section twenty-five. Eh, tane, imembaraya Democratic Alliance, le shaku section twenty-five aywoni korunaxi oshilishe ngatamsoso ay tamseso. Njela le shaku lokose iteka mapraseloma ngikini kasa kuudia. Awo tellela orifana ina tikrofana oma kila nukuzimbabze. I Chief, seso wa nikuna malili nganikiwa. Iwa balabala iwa ulaku na na eh, iteresis IMF five hundred video. Le namucha inga yela asu comment ka shawa nukwaka. Se tane, ina erwa akati imembarata Democratic Alliance here is section twenty-five. Loko kukiachichewa. Akubi na nderiswokar lo nikuwa ka kumuni ibana ya na awakara alotira. Ay misawa le angalo ikuma iteriwani se yva ylotiriwase akubi na compensation yokari. Inka tekiwe, ivemu na ngani ku compensation yokari, nkoum.
Nkoum. Minan ni Johanna Wakazita, ne uma ekretakiani Municipality. Ekui emaila bandara di ei. Section twenty-five, na ivona, ne imana yona. Kambene alana na ku amendla ekankarasis. Ekui emaila bandara di ei, ne wula lezi. Monu wa na wa na unalungelo robula kutitwa kaya ena. Ekui ay section thirty-three stroke one. Lesu flakmonu wa na ngwani angasukota kusamsa les ukutitwa kaya les aditu sakso. Shabu mbiri. Loko hilango tamasi kunzako ekamagaya msaba. Lenzako kunka induati corruption. Let ba ngwan ba koosis. Malile si ba ngwan varlela ku yo. Ingat ba nga hakiriwa. Ba ngwan ba nga tchala ba nga iterisa njela ya wusomfa. Se magale inkwayo esu blablabu kungunduani. Lesu singa enduwa lenraku. Loko ka enduwa makaya msaba. Se sesiyo magani alana na ku amendla section twenty-five. Ena shiwa nishoa hetel le shninga wula kuxo na. Magale inkwayo. Anitawa na ku zakera na kunavela ku. Kotu iriyo na le inga yenza. Ingayateka shibo. Ekasilo inkwaso lesu singa wula vuriwa. Kovayona inga tabula le shaku monuwa compensation itiwakumbbe angakompensation itiwu. Ekui wula lezi. Ekui emaila bandara di ei. Nere ee ee. Minan ani amendi le shinga konosis. Before court yaya teka shibo, nkoum.
Kansa kunikwankari. Thank you very much. Kansa kunikwankari. And to appreciate parliament to, to be here today, coming to the people. Of course, parliament is the voice of the people. And here we are the people and we appreciate you for coming down here to consult the people widely. My question is, why should we compensate a stolen property? Ukukala kaini efanele ni kama mono lukwai wemisaba. Ngu nikama de ringfu. Of course, our government tried its best to come with a policy of willing buyer, willing seller. And that policy did not yield positive result to our people. As our people after twenty-six years, they don't have land. And without land, you don't have a dignity. We are without a dignity because we don't have a property that can restore our dignity. And when we voted in nineteen ninety-four, the chief aim akuruku, misaba efanele wela abanwi. The land must come back to the people. It's rightful owners of the land. So, as sangko in Mobani, we are saying, we support the expropriation of land without compensation. And we further support that section twenty-five of the constitution should be amended. Particular list, subsection two, subsection three, subsection seven. It should be amended so that it restore the dignity of our people. And we are saying to you, parliamentary residents sitting before us today here, go back to parliament, tell all parliamentary to say, our people, the people that we are representing, are saying section twenty-five of the constitution should be amended right from the voices of our people across the country. So, emeridialawa, ilabakubula kuri, that particular section should be indeed be amended so that the dignity of our people should be restored going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have further hands? Let's take the three and make them last. Come closer to the mic and the two of you. What do you think? No, the three are fine, don't force them. We are forcing them now, so let's eh. Sway mochi, eh, yambaga shlekaku. Let's take this last hand, say.
Nkoum. Minan ninga imala. Imina shivambutinso alu constance. Ni membera shidiya ANC. Ni karin samakuala tikwenri rakatho. Minan bo na section twenty-five efanele amendiwa. Ni kananga imina shonaku. Efanele amendiwa kunga arnandi hisu. Ni kananga imina shon shaku. Di hisa imaka ku. Shitike ngofu akusungulelo kubana makaya na basusu aleni. Basie shot, basie shotala ngofu. Basie ti mucho lungwashu abari swaki nchumu ena boru aluaba ba chukmetuano ben. Bati njela le shu bafane kubaku meka wa karu bato mbeta witi loko kokoro. Se shesi. Ani nga, ni kananga imina shonashu ngasungabula vrisi, ishibula vrisi nganisiku. Loko mukuma kura na yindukwale akufanele kupuwa nele ko bo, bo ri swaka yoo. Se ani imina shonu kunele kusungulelo balabanga sisu akua la aban ndelu angetchumu. Basira abakokua noa ena shulovi no batiba ina. Bati melashu ngayama kuala na mwinyine aban imaka shesi shesi. Se asinga laveku ku. Nasosuma ba nga tasuku makua la asinga risi kunala ba nganyana ba ndelu angetchumu. Loko kumfumu aushukwela. Aofanele wo. La nguti sisa na mabonele malama minan maboni. Nenga maboni sashona ivu endi, nkoum.
Eh, ni kala luli metsa gama oka, gamo araholo we drabele gama oka. Eh, depatis gama oka, gopana papanaga yon. Na kenarama yla alfrete kijwa motsemala pebani, what thirty-four. And then, ki mo lagatonla muketuwa African National Congress. Eh, ki ratahule cha gore lena, ki supporta garulo ya masumi berichano ya malaotheo ore eh, nefasi la ma Africa gama kale swanjela buye beg. Ntalete ifo. Mbake wancha gore, retwangere levelle gore, baleka garalaba moriske ratarare. Re malaotheo ero pasisi di. Rio supportile watawa kumanele gore re na gabore na ma Africa. Rolo agabo uni mola elogore. Re fodi jena, baleki diri, kikomeki rekomenda gore. Retwangere gore le parlamenta ye eh, hono olebele lagabote. Edi tipirisu gore edo tipidisabiang. Gore terehono o, o, huetanaga. Loko reterehono ke treme la re hueti li ju eh, tiritirile di gilero. Kala bo.
Eh, wela. Ya wulela omu shangka ora tarani, shantera fandisent. Zani, angazanisa guri thumadi, ardu no la yefu. I stand to support the amendment of section twenty-five of the constitution, constitution in order to make the expropriation of land.
Come closer to the mic.
In order to make the, in, in order to make the expropriation of land without compensation possible. The state include, including parliament, executive and judiciary carry an obligation to redress the imbalance of the past through enactment, enactment of laws, of laws that will achieve redress and quality redistribution of resources. Property may be expropriated, expropriated without compensation only in terms of law of the general application or public purpose or in the public interest. The state should be custodian of all South Africa's natural resources including of land, mineral resources and water and relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define the contextual, contextual state, state custodianship of natural resources. For the purpose of action, the public interest include the nation's commitment of the land reform and reform to bring about the equitable access to all South African resources. And the property is not limited to land. The private property in land ownership must be stopped, must, must stop to exist and be replaced with common ownership of the land, of land by the people as whole. Thank you.
We want to close now. Kono waksimba yela ngapans. We have nature.
Sesogolo ere ki wanaye lora ke, ki dumela na lori le amendiwa. Mara ifela kina le gameji sichaba, kaya imena kuroti. Gameji community moku da ngona. Bale, kina le wuchata beore. Egaru parlamenta inibela ku, ri, dina jela jela, ri jeda ku, ma ku. Ki kitiwe, ki damu bato. Ya da alebela le kambato nuro. Le baba ngwe, ba jeda. Example, rana listaba sesindi sesi veli ilue osesindi nchi. Bale asina malu, esina malu do parlamenta isenyakule belancho mkuwa ore. Ha osana na ya utu amkuwa boila oyakuwa. Mampakatsi. Kere tchavi ni bato badule. Abadule abote badule yare tchavi ni. Eni masbala uftele lu bafa me. Eni gamo tasi abatra homu. Eh, bafi duwe, koleka yalema o, 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 oka sebe ekere jari nyano urbatoa bangwa kumane kole. Bale, bale kama duli. Kina le wuchata beore gameji balu ruballa. Eni bato ba le ku melana kua, abato ba le swanjova fa. Lili ndiavon. Kupela ore. Helile la re, litsene. Upe la ore, helile la re, le chenchame la oyalenya. Le chencheni kama nete, osaba ntwele ore, le chenchaka le bampi kijiwu. Le chencheka nele re dere ribona ore, batu bale na bakuma na manna abu, ode na jawona. Biale kaya baba jede, batu baba shu, kaya ika, ika, baba duwa ona le ma kitari abuni. Asa de mula kia upela ba, ba seni, ode na jawo bona, kialabo.
Whilst we receive the constitution amendment of the, of the, of the section twenty five, of the constitution, I support it. Like when you take me, your arms, you must take, you take what you intend to really amend. But as you, your arms and seeking mandates and impots, I want to chat. Because we never had enough time to discuss these documentations. Except the document which we received this morning, the amendment of section twenty five. That's an exploitation act in nineteen seventy five. Eh, I, I, I don't know if I'll get answers today. But we met, sorry, on the exploitation act of nineteen seventy five. With the parliament discussed it, and what was the outcome of that? Secondly, now I'm from the family community, half of one of my brothers. Eh, whilst we, we appreciate the land restitution as it is. But we find the, the parliament or the legislation not fighting on their, on their mandates, with the taking parliament, for instance. Majority of the land in the family communities is still in the hands of whites. So, even if you find land being ceded in favor of communities, the white people, white racist, eh, members of the communities, they still continue buying and selling land amongst each other. Whilst those land are being prioritized for land reform and land restitution.
Orino form of the department. Thank you.
Na walepinga riki. So itte kwayabe watin tave, inela sevistilivar kunganti ro. Uyi ako, loku mukmendashkuntanam, kambruksakopam, rubenkula. Of course, apna kaksas ya sevistilivar iako. So itlela itaita lwa ike na kame, loku mokmula, natsa nta wliyatale, ke kantawli na waleteka inka. So akuna nse uroba wukuma, u, u loku isuka, chat swai, kala yali. Nshlosho, palasma, saranasma, raittekan, shmarabatekan kimpasu, paapu chwele, abale abutala. Akaba koma sukela wafi kala, bala fala kuwa tla wassungabu. So nearly section thirty five, ai amendiwa, eni kale i merile. We are ready, eh, ilishkuleni, eh, indela kacha, we are ready to waiting for the land. Tofa.
Se, ashi tsamiseka, mina banfumu, mitiresu nen, mi endeso na. Loko mukote kusengela tabalu na. Abile shi bangwani bangka hande, bangka ka bangka shi, marala bangala. Batash, batash hisa kama shi, batava ya, bale, babu la wale yi. Eh, ina ai supporter, es, osomo, shibeti wa supporter shunen, section thirty one, thirty five. Ore ai amendiwa, wa inga amendiwa, eh, chawa yi, inchi inleshi chawa usho. Etan enda lesu nabu bangka enda so. Loko wa itega pela, ai irna sungwanyani, na ina ita i enda lesu bangka i enda so. Se, ni kesa nati, pati le tinga kona aleno, kuwa, kuwa to. Eh, mi shishi men go, mi shishi men kosu zatomo, shibeti, mi shishi men a e sa. Na kesa sunen, ani kasit kota kula klasota. Nko omu, yi manasona na ina ku, ai wa amendiwa, nko omu.
Thank you. Thank you. One question I think, one question I think. So, speaking of which. We really appreciate all those that made the submissions, all the political parties that are here today. And of course, all the submissions that you have made are going to be compiled and taken to parliament. As you can see, behind us, we have a team that is oppending each and every submission that you made. What the parliament is doing with this adro, in which in twenty eighteen, you showed an interest that the act must be amended, is to try to redress the imbalances of the past. As you all know, that those that came in our country took our land and the constitution that we have, had that willing buyer and willing seller. So now, as the parliament, we are trying to redress that. We all know that we are not yet free if the land is not in the majority of the people that are withdrawing his care. So we really appreciate siya bolela, siya banga, nko omu. Thank you.
Doing it for the generation that was here in the house. But we're also doing it for future and future generations. But as a takeover of this country, of course, whatever we do, whatever we do, the inheritors that we love, who love us, who started it in nineteen ninety four. I want to build it.
Democratic and the united and the prosperous South Africa. With those words, the meeting stands closed. Thank you very much.